Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody.
It's Justin. Are you there? Perfect submission, perfect delight. Visions of rapture now burst on my side. Angels descending, ring from above. Echoes of mercy, whispers of love. This is my story, this is my song. Praising my Savior all the day long. This is my story, this is my song. Praising my Savior all the day long. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody.
It's Justin. Are you there? Oh, Justin. I'm mute. Okay, hi, Justin. Are you okay? Just woke up?
Just woke up.
Okay, that's good. Thanks for coming. Yeah, we really hope that other people will join us. But today, we just heard that Pastor Gabriel is a little sick today, and we need a prayer, so I want to start with a prayer for him and hopefully the other participant will join us. So let's start with a prayer. Most dear heavenly parents, Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for the day that you gave us. And you always bring the beautiful sunshine and rain, or whatever it is, that all the things that you gave us is your expression of love really nurturing our physical body and also our soul. Today, we study this chapter, the spirit world and the physical world. This is a chapter that all of us need to know because that is the final destination that after our life on the earth is over. Even though we all understand that our life is not going to be forever on the earth, but there are few, only few, knows how to prepare ourselves. And also, the only few knows how wonderful and how great the next world is because of the ignorance that we fell into because of the fault of past human ancestor. We became so blind ourselves for the eternal world. But today, we learn from the divine principle and scriptures and also the words of the founder, Reverend Samuel Moon and Hapsham Moon. Please guide us through this session, and we pray that all people who participated before will come and join us today and also pray for the quick recovery of the Reverend Gabriel and hope that he can join us later on when he recover from the situation he is in. We pray together in Jesus mighty name and in our own name. And like we pray, amen, and I do. Thank you. So without further ado, today, we have this topic. Let me share the screen. So today's topic is spirit world and physical world. The scripture we are referring to is Matthew 18:18. "I should agree, I said to you, whatever you bind on earth will be bound in heaven, and whatever you loose on earth will be loosed in heaven." So I'll switch over to the... This is a divine principle reading. The incorporeal world, the corporeal world as substantial realities.
The incorporeal world as substantial realities. The universe was created after the pattern of a human being who is in the image of God's dual characteristics. Therefore, the structure of the universe and every entity in it resembles that of a human being, which consists most fundamentally of mind and body. Corresponding to the human mind and body, the universe consists of the incorporeal world and the corporeal world, both of which are real and substantial. The incorporeal world is so called because we cannot perceive it through our five physical senses. Yet, we can perceive it through our five spiritual senses. Those who have had spiritual experiences testify that the incorporeal world appears as real as the world in which we live. The incorporeal and corporeal worlds together form the cosmos. The body cannot act apart from its relationship with the mind. A person cannot perform true actions apart from a relationship with God. Likewise, the corporeal world cannot manifest its true value apart from a relationship with the incorporeal world. Furthermore, just as we cannot discern a person's character without fathoming his mind, and we cannot understand the fundamental meaning of human life without understanding God, so we cannot completely understand the nature and structure of the corporeal world without understanding the nature and structure of the incorporeal world. The incorporeal world, or spirit world, is in the position of subject partner, and the corporeal world, or physical world, is in the position of object partner. The latter is like a shadow over the former. When we shed our physical bodies after our life in the physical world, we enter the spirit world as spirits and live there for eternity. 6.2, the position of human beings in the cosmos. The position of human beings in the cosmos has three aspects. First, God created human beings to be the rulers of the universe. The universe does not of itself have internal sensibility toward God. Hence, God does not govern the universe directly. Rather, God endowed human beings with sensibilities to all things in the universe and gave them the mandate to rule over the universe directly. God created the human body with elements from the physical world, such as water, clay, and air, to allow us to perceive and govern it. To make it possible for us to perceive and govern the spirit world, God created our spirits with the same spiritual elements that compose the spirit world. On the Mount of Transfiguration, Moses and Elijah, who had died hundreds of years earlier, appeared before Jesus and ministered to him. These were actually the spirits of Moses and Elijah, yet Jesus was able to converse with them and was glorified before them. Human beings compose of flesh which can dominate the physical world and spirit which can dominate the spiritual world. Likewise, have the potential to rule both worlds. Second, God created human beings to be the mediator and the center of harmony of the cosmos. When a person's flesh and spirit unite through give and take action and become God's substantial object partner, the physical and spiritual worlds can also begin give and take action with that person as their center. They thus achieve harmonious integration to construct a cosmos that is responsive to God. Like the air that enables two tuning forks to resonate with each other, a true person acts as the mediator and center of harmony between the two worlds. The ability to communicate between the two worlds may also be likened to a radio or television, which transforms invisible waves into perceptible images and sounds. Thus, a person can accurately convey the realities of the spirit world to the physical world. Third, God created human beings to encapsulate in a substantial form the essences of everything in the cosmos. God created the universe by projecting and developing the pre-existent prototype of the human internal nature and external form into countless substantial forms. The human spirit encapsulates all the elements found in the spirit world since God created the spirit world as the unfolding of the spirit's internal nature and external form. The human body encapsulates all the elements of the physical world since God created the material realm as the unfolding of the body's internal nature and external form. Accordingly, since human beings contain within themselves the essences of all things in the cosmos, each person is a microcosm. However, due to the human fall, the universe has lost its master. Saint Paul wrote, "The creation waits with eager longing for the revealing of the sons of God," that is, people who have been restored to the original state. Tragically, with the fall of human beings, who should have served as the center of universal harmony, the give and take between the physical and spiritual worlds was severed. The two worlds were rendered utterly unable to achieve integration and harmony. Since they remained divided, Paul continued, "The whole creation has been groaning in travail." Jesus came as the new Adam, perfect in flesh and spirit. He was the microcosm of the cosmos. This is why it is written, "God has put all things in subjection under His feet." Jesus is our Savior. He came into the world to open the way for fallen people to become perfect as He was perfect by moving our hearts to believe in Him and become one with Him. 6.3, the reciprocal relationship between the physical self and the spirit self. 6.3.1, the structure and functions of the physical self. The physical self consists of the dual characteristics of the physical mind, subject partner, and the physical body, object partner. The physical mind directs the physical body to maintain the functions necessary for its survival, protection, and reproduction. Instinct, for example, is an aspect of an animal's physical mind. For the physical self to grow in good health, it must have proper nourishment. It must absorb air and sunlight, which are intangible yang types of nourishment, and must eat and drink food and water, which are tangible yin types of nourishment. The body has give and take with this nourishment through its digestive and circulatory systems. Good or evil in the conduct of the physical self is the main determinant of whether the spirit self becomes good or evil. This is because the physical self provides a certain element, which we call the vitality element, to the spirit self. In our everyday experience, our mind rejoices when our physical self performs good deeds but feels anxiety after evil conduct. This is because vitality elements, which can be good or evil according to the deeds of the physical self, are infused into our spirit self. 6.3.2, the structures and functions of the spirit self. Our spirit self, or spirit, is a substantial yet incorporeal reality which can be apprehended only through the spiritual senses. It is a subject partner to our physical self. Our spirit can communicate directly with God and is meant to govern the incorporeal world, including the angels. In appearance, our spirit self matches our physical self. After we shed the physical self, we enter the spirit world and live there for eternity. The reason we desire an eternal life is because our innermost self is the spirit self, which has an eternal nature. Our spirit self consists of the dual characteristics of spirit mind, subject partner, and spirit body, object partner. The spirit mind is the center of the spirit self, and it is where God dwells. The spirit grows through give and take action between two types of nourishment: life elements of a yang type that come from God and vitality elements of a yin type that come from the physical self. The spirit self not only receives vitality elements from the physical self, it also returns an element to the physical self, which we call the living spirit element. When people receive grace from a heavenly spirit, they undergo many positive changes in their physical self. They feel infinite joy and new strength welling up in them, which can even drive away illness. Such phenomena occur because the physical self receives living spirit elements from the spirit self. The spirit can grow only while it abides in the flesh. Thus, the relationship between the physical self and the spirit self is similar to that between a tree and its fruit. When the physical mind obeys the spirit mind and the physical self acts according to the good purpose of the spirit mind, the physical self receives living spirit elements from the spirit self and becomes wholesome. In return, the physical self provides good vitality elements to the spirit self, which enable the spirit self to grow properly in the direction of goodness. Truth illuminates the innermost desires of the spirit mind. A person must first comprehend his spirit mind's deepest desire through the truth and then put this knowledge into action to fulfill his responsibility. Only then do the living spirit elements and vitality elements reciprocate within him, enabling him to progress toward goodness. The living spirit element and the vitality element have the relationship of internal nature and external form. Because all people have living spirit elements ever active within themselves, even an evil person's original mind inclines toward goodness. However, unless he actually leads a life of goodness, the living spirit elements cannot engage in proper give and take with the vitality elements, nor can they be infused into his physical self to make it wholesome. It can be inferred from the above that the spirit self can attain perfection only during a person's earthly life. The spirit mind guides the spirit self as it grows in the soil of the physical self. The growth of the spirit self toward perfection progresses through the three orderly stages ordained by the principle of creation. A spirit in the formation stage of life is called a form spirit; in the growth stage, a life spirit; and in the completion stage, a divine spirit. A spirit fully matures as a divine spirit when a person's spirit self and physical self unite through perfect give and take action, centered on God, and form the four-position foundation. A divine spirit can accurately feel and perceive every reality in the spirit world. As these spiritual realities resonate through the body and manifest themselves as physiological phenomena, they can be recognized through the five physical senses. People of divine spirit who thus resonate with the spirit world build the kingdom of heaven on earth. When they shed their physical bodies, they will make a smooth transition into the kingdom of heaven in the spirit world. For this reason, the kingdom of heaven in heaven will be realized only after the kingdom of heaven on earth has been established. All the sensibilities of a spirit are cultivated through the reciprocal relationship with the physical self during earthly life. Therefore, only when a person reaches perfection and is totally immersed in the love of God while on earth can he fully delight in the love of God as a spirit after his death. All of the qualities of the spirit self are developed while it abides in the physical self. Sinful conduct during earthly life aggravates evil and ugliness in the spirit of a fallen person, while the redemption of sins granted during earthly life opens the way for a spirit to become good. This was the reason Jesus had to come to the earth in the flesh to save sinful humanity. We must lead a good life while we are on the earth. Jesus gave the keys to the kingdom of heaven to Peter, who remained on the earth, and said, "Whatever you bind on earth shall be bound in heaven, and whatever you loose on earth shall be loosed in heaven, because the primary objective of the providence of restoration must be carried out on the earth." It is not God who decides whether a person's spirit enters heaven or hell upon his death; it is decided by the spirit himself. Humans are created so that once they reach perfection, they will fully breathe the love of God. Those who committed sinful deeds while on earth become crippled spirits who are incapable of fully breathing in the love of God. They find it agonizing to stand before God, the center of true love. Of their own will, they choose to dwell in hell, far removed from the love of God. Since the human spirit can grow only in the soil of the physical self, the multiplication of human spirits takes place at the same time that the multiplication of physical selves occurs during earthly life. 6.3.3, the spirit mind, the physical mind, and their relationship in the human mind. The human mind consists of the spirit mind and physical mind. The relationship between these two minds is like that between internal nature and external form. When they become one through give and take action with God as their center, they form a united functioning entity, which guides the spirit self and physical self to become harmonious and progress toward the purpose of creation. This united entity is the mind of a human being. The conscience is that faculty of the human mind, which by virtue of its inborn nature, always directs us towards what we think is good. However, due to the fall, human beings have become ignorant of God and thus ignorant of the absolute standard of goodness. For this reason, we are unable to set the proper standard of judgment for our conscience. As the standard of goodness varies, the standard of our conscience also fluctuates. This causes frequent contention even among those who advocate a conscientious life. The original mind is that faculty of the human mind which pursues absolute goodness. It relates to the conscience as internal nature to external form. A person's conscience directs him to pursue goodness according to the standard which he has set up in ignorance, even though it may differ from the original standard. However, the original mind being sensitive to the proper direction repels this faulty standard and works to correct the conscience. As long as our spirit mind and physical mind are under the bondage of Satan, the functioning entity they form through their give and take action is called the evil mind. The evil mind continually drives people to do evil. Our original mind and conscience direct us to repel the evil mind. They guide us in desperate efforts to reject evil desires and cling to goodness by breaking our ties with Satan and turning to face God.
Okay, so today's discussion point. How our life on earth affects our life in the spirit world? So this is a discussion point, and we're gonna revisit later on. So this is just an explanation about SCLC. If you are a first time, SCLC, American Clergy Leadership Conference, founded during the May of 2000 in Korea, when the 120 clergy gathered to affirm the vision given by God to Reverend Samuel Moon and Dr. Hapsham Moon to unify the body of Christ. So the purpose is to unify the body of Christ yes, so it is correlation of the clergy, work into strengths and marriage, rebuild families, restore communities, and renew the nation and the world. So 1 Corinthians 1:10 describes, "Now I prayed with you, brethren, by the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, that you all speak the same thing, and that there be no divisions among you, but that you be perfectly joined together in the same mind and in the same judgment." The Holy Bible, there is a passage in John 16:25. "These things I have spoken to you in figurative language, but the time is coming when I will no longer speak to you in the figurative language, but I will tell you plainly about the Father. And he said to me, 'You must prophesy again about many peoples, nations, tongues, and kings,' Revelation 10:11." So our study is based on the divine principle, which we believe that today's new revelation that has prophesied in the Bible. So Section 6, this is about spirit world and physical world. The Bible passages apply to this chapter, especially all the things that are explained in the divine principle is here. Hebrew 8. "Who saw the copy and shadow of the heavenly things, as Moses, as was divinely instructed when he was about to make the table? For he said, 'See that you make all things according to the pattern shown you on the mountain.'" So the divine principle describing how this universe is created. The universe is created in the pattern and the image of God, of basically human beings. And the human beings, Adam and Eve, were created in the image of God. So there is a pattern that already existed with God that is projected to the human beings and the universe. So the universe has dual structure, just like human beings have the mind and body. The universe has a world like mind, which is the spirit world, and a world like body, which is the physical world. So this is Hebrew 8. Then the Genesis 1. "Then God blessed them, and God said to them, 'Be fruitful and might cry through the earth and subdue it. Have dominion over the fish of the sea, over the birds, of the air, and over every living thing that moves on the earth.'" So this is God's three great blessings for human beings, and particularly the dominion over everything He created. So the human beings are in the position to have dominion over the spirit world and the physical world, because everything was created by God. So Matthew 17. "Now, after six days, Jesus took Peter, James, and John, his brother, led them up on the high mountain by themselves, and he was transferred before them; his face shone like the sun, and his clothes became as white as the light. And behold, Moses and Elijah appeared to them, talking with him." So this scripture shows that those two individuals, Moses and Elijah, who passed away a long time ago before Jesus came, appeared in the mountain. And he was spoken to Jesus. Jesus was able to communicate, converse with Moses and Elijah. So this is a passage in the Bible describing the spirit persons, spirit man, and spirit body does exist, and thus throughout the Bible. And Romans 8. "For the honest expectation of the creation eagerly waits for the revealing of the sons of man, sons of God; for the creation was subjected to futility, not willingly, but because of him who subjected it in hope, because the creation itself also will be delivered from the bondage of corruption into the glorious liberty of the children of God; for we know that the whole creation groans and labors with bronze pans together until now." 1 Corinthians 15. "For God has put all things in subjugation under his feet; but when it says, 'All things are put in subjugation under him,' it is plain that he is expected to put all things under him." 1 Corinthians 15:44. "It is on a natural body; it is raised a spiritual body." There is a natural body, and there is the spiritual body. Matthew 16:19. "And I will give you the keys of the kingdom of heaven; and whatever you bind on earth will be bound in heaven, and whatever you loose on earth will be loosed in heaven." And again, Matthew 18:18. "I should agree, I said to you, whatever you bind on earth will be bound in heaven, and whatever you loose on earth will be loosed in heaven." Finally, Matthew 6. "Do not lay up for yourselves treasures on earth, where moth and rust destroy, and where thieves break in and steal; but lay up for yourselves treasures in heaven, where neither moth nor rust destroys, and where thieves do not break in and steal; for where your treasure is, there your heart will be also." Okay, next, I'd like to ask Julia to read the... This is Father Moon's speech.
Just as we never imagined life in the world during our time in the womb, while we are living in the flesh, we cannot imagine the very different eternal and infinite world that is waiting for us. It is not a world of despair. It is not a world of despair. A life of 100 years in this limited earthly realm transitions into life in the eternal realm, transcendent of time and space. While living in the womb, we are supplied with nutrients from our mother through the umbilical cord. And our earthly life depends on the three basic elements of the universe, water, air, and light, as well as nutritive elements. Once we enter the spirit world, however, we no longer need material nutrients. We live breathing love for all eternity. In the eternal world, we eat if we want to, and we do not eat if we would rather not. No matter who we are, we live our life in three stages: 10 months in water, 100 years on earth, and eternity in the spirit world. Father Moon, 2004. "Since air in the spirit world is composed of love, if your spirit self is not prepared, you will not be able to breathe when you enter the heavenly realms. The world here is a world of air, but the next world is a world of love. You have to prepare your spirit self to feel love, otherwise you will not be able to establish relationships in the spirit world. Then you will have bigger problems that will take millions of years to resolve. We are born in love that represents God. We live in love, we reach the destination of love by having sons and daughters, and we return to God to live with Him eternally. In other words, our life begins with love, matures with love, and is harvested as the fruit of love. Death is the point at which the fruit of love is harvested. We received our parents' love, shared the love of husband and wife, and loved our children. Therefore, we have to harvest the fruits of God's love that have ripened in the eternal world of love, scattered throughout our lifetime, and take them with us to the spirit world. When I become completely one through love, I come to resemble God. If a husband or wife unite and realize completely those three stages of love, when they go to the spirit world, they will become for eternity the object partner God in front of the eternal subject partner God. This takes place when a husband and wife pass away with true love as their center. Thus, we begin with God and end with God. Through the fall of Adam and Eve, this planet Earth came to be under the rule of Satan, and hell was created in the spirit world. Therefore, the territory in which Satan can rule extends to the realm of hell on earth and the realm of hell in the spirit world. This is why they need to be liberated. If there had been no fall, hell on earth and hell in the spirit world would never have existed, and only the ideal kingdom of heaven would have been established on earth and in the spirit world as a single continuous reality. However, because of the fall, two worlds that could be ruled by Satan came into being. Satan's dominion over these worlds therefore needs to be nullified. Jesus said, "The kingdom of God is among you," in Luke 17:21, "and that the kingdom of heaven is centered on God's love. Because the love of God is the center, all relationships in the kingdom of heaven are based on God's love, and a universally well-ordered environment comes about. Then to reside in that realm, what kind of person do you need to be? Only those who are harmonized with the essence of God, God's love, can reside there. People who are not like that cannot experience it. What then can harmonize with the essence of God's love? Self-centeredness is worthless. Only investment for others, of one's life, one's devotion, and everything one has allows one to live continuously in the realm of God's love. What kind of people can live in the kingdom of heaven on earth? What kind of spirits can live in the infinite spirit world, the kingdom of heaven in heaven? People that have received the love of Jesus and the Holy Spirit on earth, and going beyond that, receive the love of the Father directly, live together with Him, and become the victors of harmony based on the ideal of love. Only they can live in that kingdom. If one's past life was entirely a life of giving, there will be no fear on the path of death. A shining past is a life of giving everything to others, sacrificing for others, shedding tears for others, investing life for others, desiring for others, concentrating all one's vitality and investing it for others. For ordinary people facing the vicissitudes of the fallen world, their path of life is sometimes up and sometimes down. They may make plans from one year to the next, or maybe plan their future for 10 to 20 years, but always centered on themselves. However, when they meet their final destiny, all the records of sacrificing others for their own benefit will bind them."
Amen. Thank you. So this is the discussion point. How our life on earth affects our life in the eternal world? We call it spirit world in the divine principle. Bible describes it as the heavenly, heavenly world. So those two worlds, physical world, where we can see, we can touch, exist, as well as the spirit world, it's like a world of mind. So in the beginning, you can see that we saw those descriptions in the scripture. So Hebrew 8, this is describing how God created the universe. God created everything in the image, image of himself. But first of all, there is the image of man. God created man in His own image. Male and female, He created them. So this is a principle of creation. So if we look at ourselves as a man, we are the image of God. That means that there is a mind, which is, mind is not visible, it's invisible mind. But mind is, world of mind is quite different from our body. Body is very limited to the time and space, so there's mind and body. But how about the universe? Did God created the universe in the world, world like the mind? And also world like body? Yes, of course, because everything is in the image of, the pattern, the pattern shown on you. So that is where God created, so there is the universe in the pattern of our mind. And then there is the universe like a pattern of our body. So the human beings is in the, in the very special place in the God's creation. We are ruler. We are created as a ruler of this universe. In other words, we have a mind, spirit, which can rule the invisible world. So the Bible describes that Jesus said, "Do we not know that we can judge even angels? Angel is not a physical being, angel is a spiritual, spiritual being. But we are created originally to judge angel, or judge, or rule the invisible or heavenly universe. But also that we are created as a ruler of this world, physical world. So then all the other scriptures are clearly described the existence of the celestial, heavenly body, and also earthly body. But a relationship between the heavenly body and the earthly body is clearly described in the word of Jesus. "Whatever you bind on earth will be bound in heaven, and whatever you loose on earth will be lost in heaven." So hopefully we can bring up more insight through our discussion. And please let's focus on this topic, discussion point, hot point, how our life on earth affects our life in the spirit world. Okay. Hi Reverend, Reginald, how are you?
Can I say something?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Would you like to comment?
Please, Lord. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, yes.
Okay, thank God for today's topic, how our life on earth affects our our life in the spirit world. I think what today's topic is trying to let us know is that by the principle of creation, one of the divine principles is the duality of life, the duality of existence. And that is seen in the way God created the heavens and the earth. It also shows in the image, the very image of God. The Bible says, "God created us in His image." Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes. Yes.
God created us in His image, male and female created He them. The image of God has a duality of male and female. So and that also shows that the way God created man, He created us spirit, He created us soul as mind and body, mind and body. Okay, so that means we have two realities, two existential realities. We have the spiritual reality, and we have the physical reality. Now, the Bible says that God is a spirit, and then that worship must worship in the spirit and in truth. And as, as, as children of God, as believers in Christ Jesus, followers of God, the Bible says that as children of God, we should be imitators of God. And how can we be imitators of God when we don't live on the plane on which God lives? Don't exist from the, from the point where God exists. Most of what God is trying to get us to understand is to live from our spiritual realities, because the spiritual realm controls the physical realm. The spiritual realm is higher than the physical realm. So God wants us to exist, God wants us to have the advantage from the spirit realm and use that advantage to have dominion on the, on the physical realm. And that's what a lot of Christians don't understand. They don't understand that the best investment is the kind of investment we make in our spirit. The investment we make to grow spiritually. The investment we make to expand our faith, to increase in love, to increase in all of these spiritual realities. There are spiritual realities that God wants us to walk in. And when we have, when we grow spiritually and we walk in these spiritual realities, we are able to bring the influence of the kingdom of God on the earth. And remember that the kingdom of God is spiritually, is in the spirit realm. But when we grow spiritually, we become participators of the kingdom, we become participators in the things of the spirit, and then we are able to bring the influence of the kingdom of God in our lives and in the lives of others. We are able to, as it were, import the influences of the kingdom of God into the physical realm, into our space, in our families, in our communities, and all that. And I want to show us something from Colossians 3, very quickly, Colossians 3. That scripture was just coming to my mind as it were, as it were, as the third one. Colossians 3:11. It says, "If ye done the reason with Christ, seek those things which are above." What are those things above? Those things that are in the realm of the spirit, in things that are in the reality of Christ. The reality of Christ is spiritual reality. Because the Bible says that Jesus Christ is a right-giving spirit, alright? It says, "Seek those things which are above where Christ seated, on the right hand of God. Seek your affection on things above, not on things on the earth. For ye are dead, and your life is lived with Christ in God. When Christ, who is our life, shall appear, then shall we also appear with him in the glory. Motify therefore your members which are on the earth, fornication, uncleanness, inordinate affection, evil conclusions, and covetousness, which is idolatry." And then it goes on and on to mention a contrast of, a contrast between the higher life, which is the spiritual life, and then the lower life, which is the physical life. So it's telling us that our affection, as children of God, as followers of Christ, our affection, our pursuit, our desires to be achieved on things that are in the reality of Christ, the spiritual realities of Christ. And what are some of those things? Love, faith, innocence, and I'm gonna take one. The most important thing of all, the most important thing we should seek in connectivity with spiritual reality is love.
Yes.
And that is the central message of Christianity. The maturity of a believer is love. When a believer becomes fully matured, he walks in love, he walks in the reality of love. I love what Father Moon said. He said, "When we cross over to the realm of glory, to the eternal realm, when, if you don't understand love, if you don't know how to walk in love, you will not be able to breathe. So you will not have spiritual life
Yes.
in the realm of glory. Why? Because love is the atmosphere of heaven. And that's what Jesus wants us to live in, and that's what the kingdom of God is all about. That's what the kingdom of God is, is not just speaking and drinking. It's a body, it's love and power, it's righteousness and joy in the Holy Ghost. These are components of love. So God wants us to have abundance of love in our hearts. The Bible says, and the reality of this love, this love of God cannot communicate, the reality of that love cannot be communicated by human love. Human love is too elementary. You need the spirit of God. In Romans 5:5, the Bible says, "And hope make it not a sin; because the love of God is shared abroad in our hearts by the Holy Ghost, which is given to us." Hallelujah. So love of God is the highest experience of spiritual reality. And that love is communicated through the love of Jesus, the sacrifice of Jesus. The love of God for us is communicated to us by the Holy Ghost. And when we fellowship with the Holy Ghost, that love is shared abroad in our hearts. We can share that love with our neighbors, we can share that love with our families, we can share that love with our, we learn to live beyond ourselves. We learn to live selfless, we learn to live in sacrifice for others and for the good of all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, that's, that's beautiful, that's great. Yes, it is true, really true. I feel that you said everything that we really need. But I'm sure that there'll be more, more to share. You know, the, yeah, it's most important, important mission, mission that Christian has is to really make people understand that reality, reality of a spiritual realm, relationship between spiritual realm and the physical realm. Because that connects everything, right? Love, true love, love is the key, the way we breathe, the love in the spirit world. So unless you develop that kind of sensitivity to love people or receive a love from other people, you will be choked. you will be choked, choked in, in the eternal death, right? That, that is, that, that's awful place. You cannot breathe. I mean, if you, if you, if you are in the water, you know, what do you feel? You cannot breathe. That's what you feel in the spirit realm, right? In the spirit world, if, if you don't know how, you cannot breathe a laugh, you'll be choked. That is hell. So, I, I feel, yeah, so if, I feel that if people understand this, there is a reality, reality of the spirit world there. Everybody has to die, right? We have to transition. Everybody has to die. There is no, no way to escape. Nobody can escape. So, if people knows about it, how can people continue to commit the terrible sin, right? And lying and cheating and all kind of violence and the kidding and the all kinds of things, right? No way.
Because the love are shared in their hearts. The love of, they have not received the love of God into their, and the love of God can only be shared in the human heart by the Holy Ghost. When people don't open their hearts to the Holy Ghost, love can come in. They cannot experience genuine love.
Right. Yeah, that's right.
Pastor.
Pastor. And any.
Doshi.
Would you like to comment?
Okay.
Yes, I can hear you.
It's been a wonderful time fellowshiping with you.
Thank you.
With this, I want to share about this, and some of the things I've learned from Father Moon in what you shared, is the importance of faith. Because without faith, you might not actually be able to bridge the gap between the natural and the supernatural, between the physical world and the spirit world. So, the link between the physical world and the spirit world is faith. You know, the person of the Holy Spirit, I believe, is, is the guide that takes us through the world of the spirit. The Holy Spirit is the guide that takes us through the world of the spirit. The, the Holy Spirit is such a wonderful personality that, you know, in, in ministry, in ministry, some of the simplest miracles I have seen. You know, it's where the Holy Spirit, when I begin to feel the sensation of the Holy Spirit right in my body and I can transmit that on people who experience really healing in their body. You know, I begin to see that the spirits, blessings in the spirit world or spiritual blessings have actually been transmitted to the physical world and that spiritual blessings are real and are transferable and are transmittable. Actually, I love this subject of the spirit world a lot, a lot, when it comes to talking about the spirit world. Because the church generally don't talk much about this very important subject. A lot of people are more, a lot of people are more apt about listening to things, what they can touch, what they can see. But what a wonderful fellowship we have tonight, talking about physical world and the spirit world. So, it's a very wonderful topic. I've seen how to partner with the Holy Spirit so that, um, it's, it's just wonderful. You feel spiritual blessings in your body, like you're anointed. You, it's, it's, you're feeling sometime like this sensation. Hello?
Yes, yes.
Hello?
Reverend Nono.
Yes.
Yes, yeah. Can I continue what I want to say?
Are you, are you true?
Hello?
We are hearing you.
Okay. So, in conclusion, yeah, okay, in, in conclusion, Holy Spirit is so wonderful as our guide in this spiritual realm and it's so real that it is impact and can be felt physically, it is, but this and causing physical changes in the lives of people.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's wonderful sharing. Thank you.
A comment.
Pastor Kenny, you are saying something?
Yes, sir. No, no, I was, I was commenting his comments. That was wonderful. Very extra, extra, and it's a blessing.
Okay. Thank you. Justin, would you like to say just a few words? Justin, our son, he's, he's living in Japan.
By the ocean.
By the ocean side.
Wow. What a lovely background you have there.
Yeah, thank you so much Pastor Kenny and Eniola. Yeah, I really appreciate what you guys say. And yeah, I, I really agree that we, we don't talk about the spirit world enough. And I, I myself, I, I didn't really understand spirit world so much. Because, yeah, I was always thinking about, you know, what can I do? What can I touch? What can I see? What, what can, what action can I take so that I can build the king of heaven myself, you know? But I really didn't think about, oh, there's this whole spirit world and angelic world that is, that is actually working together with me. And just recently, I started to really talk to my, my, my angel and talk to spirits and really start to experience the power of the spiritual world and at one point that I said in the Divine Principle is about how human beings are supposed to have dominion over the, the angelic world. Actually, we're supposed to be the masters of the angels. And a lot of times, I think we, we get that mixed up. We think that angels are higher than, than human beings, that they are, they're somehow more valuable, more greater, more powerful than us. But actually, it's, it's us who are supposed to be in the, in the master position and they're actually there to serve us and to work with us. And so, yeah, I feel just by, you know, that it's really important, first of all, just to understand that. And, and one of the things is like, you know, even though we cannot see, at least I cannot see. Some people can see, you know, spiritual world, but I cannot see the angels. But it's kind of like gravity, you know, gravity, we cannot actually see this force of gravity in the world. But we can see the results of gravity. We can see that things are happening because of gravity. We can see that, you know, we stayed on the ground and, and everything staying on the ground because of this force, this invisible force of gravity. And I think the same thing is with, you know, angels and spirits is that we, we can't see the, the angels themselves, but we can, if we work with angels, we can see their miracles. We can see how they're working in our lives. And that's what I'm experiencing these days is just, I just talk to my angels and I ask them to, to do something for me. I ask them to contact this person or share a message or bless somebody or heal somebody. And, and I'm starting to see actually results. And I'm starting to see, wow, my angels are really working hard for me. And I'm feeling so, just so grateful to, to God that I, that God has blessed, blessed us with these angels. And, you know, if we don't, if we don't use them, if we don't ask them for, for things, then they are, they kind of have no job. They're like unemployed and, and, and they don't have any mission in life. And they, they, they get, you know, like human beings, if we don't have a mission in life, we don't have a job in life, we, we feel so bored and so purposeless. And actually, angels are the same. I realize that they really want us to ask them what to do. And we need to tell them, do this, do that, talk to this person, you know, help me understand, you know, God's, God's word right now. And so, yeah, I, I feel this is such an exciting topic to explore more. And it's really wonderful to fellowship with other people who, who also have their own experiences with, with angels and spirits and and with God. So, yeah, that's all for me. And thank you very much.
Oh, that's great. That's another, another, another area that we haven't really understood or explored yet, angel. Is a real, right? Of course it is real. It's in the scripture.
Yes, I think it's a, it is a very interesting topic. I mean, I think everybody said pretty much everything I was gonna say. But I, I, I just wanna maybe reiterate what my husband said, and that is that if people understand the spirit realm, or people understand that there is a spirit realm and that the consequences of their actions will be manifested in their spirit. Even on the earth, like we talked about how there's vitality elements given and then there's also what they call life elements that go, it's like a give and take relationship. So, you know, that's, that's why healing can work, you know, spiritual healing. Because if you do something good, if you follow the word of God, you do something good, then you get these vitality elements. And it's not just a coincidence or, or something, or it just, oh, I feel good. No, it, it's a, it's a real thing that God gives you these spiritual elements. If you do, if you follow His words, if you do good deeds, you have, it has to be something you do. You can't just like think. You think, you know, stuff. It has to be substantiate, substantiated in the physical world and you, through your physical body. Then you get vitality elements. And, and so, when you get vitality element, elements, then you feel like you want to do something more good. And then when you do that something more good, you get more vitality elements and so on and so forth. So, this comes, these vitality elements come from God. They come from the spiritual realm. And that's a kind of a give and take relationship between our physical body and our spiritual body. So, that's something we can study more deeply another time, but they're very real. And this is the way we can create for ourselves heavenly kingdoms by doing these, you know, doing good actions. Like a lot of people say, you can't work your way into, into heaven. And that's, that's true. It's not, it's not working your way into heaven. God is blessing you for, for, you know, for the good things that you do. And so, it's all up to God, but He's, He's blessing you and that's His grace. But still, we have to do the work because faith without works is dead. So, yeah. So, I think if people know this, if they understand about the spiritual world, there'll be a lot less, like my husband said, a lot less crime. Because people think, you know, they go rob a bank or something. They think they get away with it. Nobody sees them, nobody knows, but they don't get away with it. They might, they might have a lot of money for a certain number of years in this physical world. But they're gonna pay for it in the spiritual realm and they're gonna pay big time. And they're, they're not going to be able to change it. Once they're, once they're dead already, they can't repent and, and, you know. So, they live a life of regret, you know? So, if people understand those things, you know, they really change their behavior and change their attitude and.
Yes.
Yep.
Amen. Thank you. Reverend Gabriel.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
First, I want to mention what everybody have said too. If, if we look at the scripture, I want to take it from John chapter three, verse one, two, three. About Nicodemus. Nicodemus was a, a, a rich man. He was a member of the Sanhedrin. But after he had been in the gospel, he went at night to meet Jesus Christ. And the response he got from Joseph was that he must be what? Born again. Now, if you look at the commentary today, talking about, we're talking about the spirit and then the body. There's a great disconnection between the two. Because why? Several times, man and woman have not sincerely given themselves to God. Man have not really, Nicodemus came down, he humbled himself. And he came to Jesus Christ and said, "Look, except you are born again." Except a man is born again, he cannot see the kingdom of God. But that was, if a man is not born again, if a woman is not sincerely born again, there's, there's going to be this connection between the supernatural and the physical. Then he now came down to verse five of, he said, "I said, the man, if anybody wanna ask again, say, how can I be born again? Do I go into my mother's womb?" So, I can, I told him, say, "Look, except a man is born of the spirit and what? And, and water." He cannot what? He cannot inherit. So, there's a level of seeing, there's a level of inheriting. So, man is stuck at the level of seeing. That what is happening right now.
Stuck.
Yes, stuck. At the level of seeing.
Yes.
And that is because several times leaders have not really lived the scripture. First of all, chapter four, verse twelve, say, "Be example of believers." That's why we see today, many people don't go to church. It was some good to charge, they fall back because while leaders are not living what they are preaching, we're not practicing what we are preaching. So, we must come to the ground where we need to try to go to preach. We'll talk about love. Like I always want to say, I say, "Let's leave Reverend Moon alone. Reverend Moon have done his own path." He has played his own role. We, we, me, ah, am I, am I practicing this law? Am I practicing this law? If I see my fellow woman, do I really, do I really show him love? Do I really show him love when he arises? I'm in a country in America now. If I see my fellow woman in America now, do I really show him love? The answer is practically no. The answer is no from what I experienced in America so far. I'm not gonna go to Nigeria, I'm not going to Nigeria. If you go there, it's another different ballgame. So, we must come to the realm, go back to basis number one, being born again. And then Matthew chapter six, thirty-three, tells us, "I said first the kingdom of God and his righteousness and all that things will follow." That is at that point, man begin to reconnect back to the supernatural. If not, that disconnection will still be there. That disconnection will still be there. That is going to happen. People don't do whatever they like. We had in a commentary today, he said, "Look, lay your treasure in heaven." In Matthew chapter six, from verse nineteen, he said, "Lay your treasure in heaven." But I get to verse twenty or so, he's not saying, "Look, you cannot serve God and serve Mammon." Man has given himself to the service of Mammon. So, there is this connection between the spirit and supernatural and the physical. Man has, we love money, that we love ourselves. We love money. People are serving money today. They are not serving God. They are not serving God. I sat in a place, in a, in a pastor's house and the wife was saying that, "Look," I want to say something that, you, you, you know, these properties, they are our property. This property, they are our property. So, nobody will, nobody will come and drag our property with us. It's for me and my husband and my children. Excuse me, how many people have been buried with property? How many people have been buried with property? And these people have not really shown the love of God, what they preach, their ministers, what they preach in the church is not what they practice at home. So, we must go back to the basis. The foundation will be corrected. But as many of us that have opened our eyes to understand this, anywhere we find ourselves, let's preach it. Don't like what our brother had posted said now. We must see ourselves talking about it. A pastor in America, what he said was. Well, he said he was led to be a pastor. And he set up a church. In Queens, he was pastor in a church. Immediately, political activity came up in Nigeria. He joined. Before he knew it, was appointed as a advisor on communication. And then he left America and back to Nigeria. And then the church was closed. Now tell me, whether that man likes it or not, on judgment day, you will have time for that deceit. We cannot serve God and serve man on. Why, why was he doing so? He did so in America because in America here, many people go to the ministry because of what they are benefiting from the government. Not for the benefit of the soul. They are not in ministry because of the soul. They are in ministry because of what they are benefiting from the government, because government, there's something government gives them here in America. And I was be able to be blunt about this thing so that none of us would go to hell because of somebody's sin. In time to, in time to patch it. For me, and I'm not American to come and patch the gospel. I made up my mind on that one. I must make heaven and whatever I takes, I must do it. So when I come, I don't want to patch it at all, because whatever thing we see, we will attend for it. It's in chapter five, verse ten. So this is time, we must, because right now, there's a big contest between the light and the dark now. In the whole world. See what is going on in Nigeria now, the law in Nigeria. See what's going on in America now. You saw the 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 president of Liberty. Liberty University. Who can tell you that that man at that level? Will engage in such a team. So for long, he have been discriminated. And that's God for you. But at the appointed time, he seen located him and he was disgraced. And that's more than I'm praying, God, everything, God, raise many. In America here, there are some of us who have been here, God, help us. You don't have, you don't have enough finance yet, but God help us, God, the gospel needs finance. God, help us to get there. People are kind of racist. You will call protest, jump back, who will jump back? Reverend, they will go, they will go there and talk about races. But you're not gonna talk about salvation. What the people need here now is salvation. No matter how, no matter, no matter of protest, the police will completely kill people. Because why? There's great disconnection between the supernatural and the natural. So God, we need to, we need to come back to the basis, reach salvation. If not, the law we are talking about is going to end up on the platter of fake. The apostles were not called Christians until when they got to chapter eleven. And in verse twenty-five. You know, say, oh, on Christmas, they are what? They are Christians. Why? Because they begin to live their life. Patterning it according to Jesus Christ. That does it. That is secret. I, as a person, I must live Jesus Christ, both in words and in action and in my dressing. Anywhere I go. And then because you will see people, you know, try to want to model after you. You want to model after, nobody see Jesus Christ, Hebrew chapter twelve, verse two, looking on to Jesus Christ, the author of Israel afraid, who have seen Jesus Christ? None of us. But you know that people see you as Jesus. They want to follow you the way you live. And I thank God and find myself, so the place that anywhere I find myself, people want to do it, you are doing it. I said, look, don't do it. Look at, look at Jesus Christ. I'm looking at Jesus Christ. They will tell you this, I just see, we are looking, we are seeing, we are following what you are doing. And God will help all of us in Jesus' name and help the whole world. Then I challenge this, but we must come down to the basis. The foundation, salvation, like our brother said, preach it. We don't preach about the spirit, the Holy Spirit. Our pastor can say it now, and that what he could have was in John chapter four, but in three and twenty-four. God is spirit, I know that worshiping, worshiping in the spirit. And I brought him to you, talk about it. We don't preach it. What I would preach today is prosperity. One save forever save. Where is it in the Bible that one save forever save? When that's where I'm going. And many pastors, many bishop, they are into it. What happened in America now, there are so many bishops like that. In this America. Who are messing up them, who are messing up themselves in the secrets. They're messing up the, they mess up their self, they still come to the gospel. They are marrying two wives, they are marrying three wives. They will marry someone and dump and take another one, they marry someone and dump and take another one. So when they go to the, and you see their church being jam packed, because why? They are also awkward. So there's great disconnection between the spirit and the physical. Because of all these, you know, all these evil things that people have perpetrated. If not, it is good, we talk about deeds. But it must not end there. We must create an opportunity for us to invite as many. And let them know also.
Yes, right.
That is how it works. For those of us who are here, God has, God has said, oh, we have understood it, we know it, then number two step is to begin to see how to. Put up a program that will invite other people and let them know. And let them know, many people don't know this thing. In Nigeria, all over the whole world, America here. The person who took me yesterday to drive me, she says, she's a woman, she doesn't go to church. Only God knows the last time she went to church. Then he now, she now asked me a question. Is it anything in the Bible? That nobody should go to church? That was a day I was at, I was at one of the bus stops, Spring Valley Bus Stop, yeah, train station. I met, I just came now from the bus. And I saw a woman and the man, they were discussing about the issue of of debt and heaven. And then seeing. One of them was saying that in their church, they were preaching to them that, no, one save forever save, no matter what, at the end of the day, you will still go to heaven. I stood, I listened to them. At the point, I I asked for audience to join them in the discussion. I want to attribute those scriptures. The next thing, the woman said, is, is, are you a pastor? I said, no, I, but I am a, I'm a child of God. She said, but the way you speak is like a pastor. I said, by the grace of God. He said, but our pastor did not teach us like this, you are saying now. She said, but tell us this. You are yesterday now, but I finished with her, he said, ah, but this thing is not right. So apart from programs, as men that comes our way, God give us the grace. To look for one way or the other, to discover the God, God would want to hear the gospel. People don't love again. People don't, they go to church, but they don't show love. Somebody is living in a big house, he's the owner of the house in America here. It was a big house and then that big house, I live the up, it's about five rooms. With big bedroom. And then it has a basement. That a basement is a leader in the church. How many people live in the house? Only him, the wife, and the one daughter. And one daughter in the whole building. His brother came from Nigeria. The brother was saying, help me, I want to come to America. It's not easy to help the man. The man now find his way to America. And landed in a place they call New Jersey, in a church there. The man had called him. That is now in America. As I'm talking to you today, he cannot invite that brother to come and sleep in his house. And that man is sleeping on that staircase in a church. And this person is a leader in the church. He's a leader in the church. Tell me, how, how, how can a people, he pries my hat and I saw it, I said, look, I said, this is wrong. You stand on the carpet there, you are saying what you are not practicing. Be down an example of believers. The brother is, is brother is somewhere now, wondering, he cannot invite him to take, he wants to, is, at a basement, there are about four rooms there. So where is the law? Where the connection between the spirit and the physical? Oh, help us in Jesus' name.
Amen, amen, thank you. Thank you very much. We 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 had such a. Deep, deep discussion and a road of realization. And we we want to continue this. We will have another session tomorrow, four P M. Our restoration Bible study, Reverend Gabriel will read us. So please join us. And also, like Reverend Gabriel said, that this truth need to be taught. In the cha, in the church and in everywhere. You know, there is such a huge disconnect, like we we call it ignorance, ignorance. People does not know ignorance about the spiritual reality, spirit world. And even they have no idea what the relationship between God. And the spirit world and us and the physical life. There is no clue, no clue. People doesn't know anything about it. It's ignorance. Why the people become ignorance? We know the answer is because of the fall, fall, the fall is a disconnect from God. And completely become the blind and so this is a thing that we need to teach, we need to spread. So please invite. Invite your friend, your your clergyman, our evangelist, or whoever want to deepen their understanding. About the gospel, about the truth, about the salvation, about our life and life after, life after death, that that means eternal life. So please join me in the prayer and we'll send out another information about the next, next. Study. So it's gonna be every month, every week. Saturday and Sunday. In your, in your app, please put your email address, email address. On in the chat, in the chat box and we'll.
Are you, are you in Nigeria or are you in U S?
Yes.
In Nigeria?
Nigeria. I'm in Nigeria. I'm a believer.
I know, I know, do you want to want me? Are you hearing me?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm, I'm hearing you. Yes, sir, thank you. I'm a Jew, I'm a, I'm a Jew.
Brother David, Brother Emily, Reverend Emily. Pastor Reginald, yeah, Pastor Reginald was supposed to be online today, but he told me. We're not be able to come online because we ran out of battery.
Okay, okay. Church, what are you charging?
Yeah.
Pastor Yola?
Yeah. Yeah.
Church, what are you charging?
Okay, the Redeemer Christian Church of God, Lord of Ghosts, yes, sir.
Okay, anybody here?
I, lucky I got, I got the girls.
Ah, there you have a big man here. There you have a big man here. A small London in there. That's good.
Okay, please join me prayer and we're gonna close the day and this session. Heavenly Father. Father, thank you very much. In Jesus' name, we are coming together.
Thank you, Father.
Understand that the world that you created, that this world and in the spiritual world. Family world and also the bodily, physical world, all three world, these two world. We are in the middle and when we are born, we grow, try to grow, not just our body, physical, but also our spirit. But spirit can only growth from your love, through your love and truth. And because of the disconnect, because between these two worlds, we cannot, many people in this world. Cannot grow their spirit. Because, because of the ignorance about the reality of the spiritual world and also most of all, reality of your presence, your love. But only through the Jesus, we are, we are unable, we are able to understand your love. His incredible sacrifice, incredible sacrifice, he gave his life. For our salvation. Because of, and then you sent the Holy Spirit. Holy Spirit is such a beautiful, graceful spirit that really embraces and connects our spirit and the body. Only through the Holy Spirit, we can finally, finally can.
As much.
Your love. Thank you very much. This is such a wonderful.
Thank you, Father.
And we understand this very clearly. Now that it's our turn, we have to. Action, we have to take responsibility for what we heard, what we understood. Just like our first human ancestor, Adam and Eve, they received the commandment, but they did not obey. They did not follow through. Then the incredible catastrophic event happened and the fall of the, their, our ancestor. But we will never repeat that kind of catastrophe. Once we receive the word, we obey, we follow, we practice, we bring the fruit. We are so grateful. We pray together in the Jesus mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much.